Okay, welcome everyone.
Good morning.
Today is September 23rd, 2019. This is the meeting of the Select Committee on Pesticide Reduction. And this meeting is being recorded.
Audio and video.
Audio and video. So, the first item on our agenda is officially changing the public forum date. Swapping one of our meeting times from 10:00 a.m. to noon on the 21st of October, to make that a forum time so that people who can't come to evening meetings might be able to make it. And then, we would have our regularly scheduled meeting instead at the forum time, which would be 7:00 p.m. that Wednesday, the 23rd. So, just want to make sure that that's okay with the rest of the committee.
Yeah, I already have it scheduled for the 23rd at 7:00.
Yeah, so instead of it being the forum, it would be the meeting.
Okay.
And then, the meeting on the 21st would be the forum instead of the meeting.
So, and that's at 10:00?
That's correct. Yep, so we're just swapping. It's the same dates that should be on our calendars, but we're swapping the content of those meeting times. Okay?
Can I move to approve that?
Yeah.
Second.
Suggestion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You have to ask if there's any more discussion.
Oh, thank you. Is there any more discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so we have swapped those times. While we're waiting, hi.
Hi, I'm Tony Kuzniers, school maintenance supervisor.
Oh, great. Hi, Tony.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome.
Waiting for David, he'll be over in a minute.
Okay.
He's doing something in the office.
Alrighty. So, according to my schedule from Lynn, we have the health department. Then, it says here, "Central Services and School Maintenance" at 10:30. Is that your understanding?
No, no, my understanding was 10:00. But we can come back at 10:30.
Okay, well, do you have any idea when the health department's coming?
She actually said to me 11:00.
Oh, good, the terms are all messed up. Okay then, I think we're gonna take-
I was pretty sure, yeah, originally our schedule was set 10:00, that's what I would say.
Okay, so-
Unless things were changed.
The schedule that I received is incorrect, so since you're here, don't leave.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Let's just take advantage of the fact that you're here. Are you, do you want to wait?
I'll wait for David, yeah.
For David, okay. So, in the meantime, we'll just proceed with a couple other discussion items for our committee.
If you don't mind me listening?
This is a public meeting.
Yeah, you can hear-
I want you to know, you can stay for the whole meeting. And you can watch-
I got work to do after.
You could even watch it on, you know, NCTV.
Yeah, you can watch it, okay.
In your spare time. Related to the forums, I just wanted to bring up the draft posters that Elisa sent around yesterday. I had one comment on those draft posters, which was that the word "green" is in the title. Green space. And I think we're talking about more than green spaces.
I was wondering about that. I don't know what the charge is, and the charge in front of it, but that was interesting.
Well, the charge doesn't say anything about green space, it just says, talks about reducing pesticide use in Northampton. So, I suggested to Elisa that we delete the word "green", and say maybe something like "public spaces".
In general, they strike me as very wordy.
Yeah.
And I think that people are confronted with so much stuff to read that, and, I mean, Elisa being an editor, would probably agree. She's not here, just I think it can be reduced significantly in the text. Which I understand she just put this out there as a first draft.
Yeah. Okay, so shall we send her those two comments then officially as a committee that would like to reduce the words?
Standing room, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so do we, do we need to make this a motion?
I don't know, let's just do it. Make an motion, I think that's a-
Okay, I made, I have made a motion that we- Do you feedback to Elisa about the forum poster? That A, it's a little too wordy, and B, we'd like to replace the word "green" with "public". Any more discussion?
Yeah, perhaps, sorry, perhaps you could let it know I'd be happy to edit.
Thank you.
Be able to contribute that effort.
And you can also send her a personal email to that effect.
Oh, okay.
And I also want to say, I appreciate the efforts with, somebody volunteered to do this. I'm not sure that, it looks really nice, all three, and that, I love the color, and it's just nicely laid out.
Yes.
And that it's pleasing to the eye, and while we're asking for a few changes here, I think by and large, these are really great.
Okay, so we would, I'll add that to my motion, that we appreciate all the comments. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hello out there, Central Services and School Maintenance.
Hello.
Hi. We would like to thank you for coming and take advantage of the fact that you are here to launch right into our conversation, but we would love it if you could just move up closer and maybe sit somewhere along in here, just so it's more comfortable and we can-
Sure.
Have us more of a conversation and a testimony.
I don't see the Danish coffee, so.
Oh dang.
Sorry for that. Have we known?
Yes.
Thank you very much for coming.
Sure.
We are the Select Committee on Pesticide Reduction. We have been charged by the City Council to make recommendations on how Northampton can reduce its use of pesticides. So, we're interviewing all the relevant departments. I'm hoping that the questions that we forwarded to Lynn got forwarded to you all, so you know what we're interested in asking you.
No.
No? Okay, well.
That's okay.
We're gonna ask anyway. And if you don't have the answers, then we will deal with that another way.
Okay.
So, how would you like to do this? Would you like to go sequentially or answer together?
So, we'll just, let me take your quick broad picture.
I'm sorry, I need names, I need names and your titles for minutes.
Tony Kuzniers.
And Tony, could you say? Thank you so much, and you are the-
Supervisor of School Maintenance.
Thank you. Sir.
Dave Comerance, Director of Central Services.
Thank you.
Would you like us to introduce ourselves?
Sure, I mean, I know half of the group here.
And do you know Cynthia?
No.
Okay.
Cynthia Swobos, I sit on the Board of Health.
Okay.
Adele Franks, Chair in this committee. Cynthia is our Vice Chair and our Minute Taker.
Jim Nash, Ward 3 City Councilor.
I'm Kate Simmons, and I'm an Environment Economist.
And Elisa Klein is unable to be here today, she's also on this committee. Okay, now-
So, to give you just for an overview of why both Tony and I are here, so Central Services handles maintenance, custodial, and grounds operations and construction for both city and school facilities. So, even though we are, I have staff that, and Tony runs the school side for maintenance, and then I have their staff that does the city side for maintenance. Everything is under the purview of Central Services. So, we have shared resources, shared staff, and that's been in existence since 1997 when councilors going way, way back before you guys deemed it appropriate to set up a central facilities department. So, we have different unions, but there's a lot of shared resources and shared missions. So, Tony can address, because it's probably more prevalent and more relevant, talk about the school side first, as far as what programs and resources we use that fall under, you know, what we're gonna call your pesticide management. We can talk about grounds, we can talk about interior of the buildings, and then I can talk a little bit more about what goes on the city side, which is much less than what happens on the school side. So, I'll let Tony jump in, and then we can sort of have a general conversation.
Okay, so would it be helpful to you if we just reviewed the questions that we were hoping you were gonna receive in advance?
Sure, sure. Let me step out real quick, be right back.
Okay. What pesticides are used in your department? How much is used every year? Where and how are they applied? To what extent is your department using alternatives to pesticides? What products and techniques are we using? How are they used and where? And what factors influence your decision about whether or not to use a pesticide? So, and by pesticide, we are including-
That's gonna be my question, so what are you including biotrend pesticide?
Yeah, the way it's used now, which is a little confusing, it includes everything. It includes herbicides, it includes rodenticides, it includes fungicides, it includes what we used to think of as pesticides against chemicals to kill insects.
Herbicides.
Herb, yep. Anything else you can think of?
Gericides as well.
Yeah. So, anything, anything sides, anything that is a side at the end. So, it's pretty comprehensive now of the use of the term.
That's how we consider it too, so.
Right.
Yeah. So, I can just give you an overview. So, from the school perspective, primarily where we're using it is the high school, outside of the grounds. So, we maintain all the athletic fields. So, we maintain them as we would normal turf field at your house. So, we use a pre-emergent crabgrass fertilizer in spring, broadleaf, treat dandelions, and then crabgrass throughout the year, and then fertilizers. We also use a grub control as needed down there, so that we don't lose the turf to grubs. And that's primarily what we use for pesticides. As needed, we use a bee spray to treat for yellow jackets primarily. If we have a nest or a white face hornet at a school, we, that's really all we use. We use very sparingly like Roundup or like a really strong herbicide. We'll use that around, if we have a lot of weeds like in a parking lot for some reason, you know, cracks there coming through, but we try not to. We limit the use of that as much as we can in the buildings. We don't really use anything, because we're pretty limited on what the law dictates that we can use. So, we have a contract with Premier Pest Control, who does our pest control. We don't treat or spray for anything ourselves at all in the schools. As needed, we'll treat, the vendor will treat for ants. Well, seasonally, we'll get like flying ants that come in through a building, or we get infestation, we'll treat for that as required. Rodents, well, we treat, but we use like glue traps, no chemicals.
Do you know which pre-emergent herbicide is?
Yeah, so this year, because we had to put out a notice, so, what's called Barricade, or the Crabgrass Preventative Fertilizer, the Lesco product, I can give you the sheet, we have it here. It's a fertilizer, pre-emergent in one, is what we apply. So, it's protamine, proteamine, I guess the main chemical.
You're gonna, you're gonna give us that, so that we're in our minutes?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And then we use what's called Escalate 2, is a selective herbicide for dandelions and other weeds that need it. We don't treat the whole field for that, like, it's a spot treatment as needed.
The Escalate is for spot treatments?
Yeah.
Okay.
I love these names they give off.
They come up with all the weird names, yeah, they're certainly weird.
I think that's the name of a car.
Yeah.
So, only the high school, don't you, nowhere else?
Primarily, yeah. No, we don't treat any of the other schools as a broad treatment. We have a contract with TruGreen who treats the high school athletic field, so the main stadium and the practice field in the back. We contract with them. Our grounds foreman has a pesticide license as well, so he's the applicator if we use anything anywhere else. But if he's using like herbicide in parking lots and stuff, he's the supplier.
So, TruGreen are the, is the company that applies the Barricade and Escalate?
Correct.
I think they used to be called Camelon, if I'm not mistaken.
From, maybe, maybe a long time ago.
Who does the JFK fields, 'cause those are pretty extensive.
We don't treat them.
Really?
No, we just seed, you know.
They have no dandelions, so I was wondering.
Yeah, there's a lot of other weeds out there.
So, you mow them, but you don't treat at all?
Not just, okay, not right now, no. We're looking at renovating those fields, like, as a broad project in the city. Renovating the baseball field and getting it a little back online. A lot of high school sports are starting to expand and use those fields more, so we're looking at doing full irrigation out there, kind of making those more playable. But right now, we're just seeding it, so we mow, and then we have a overseeder that we bought, you know, a big commercial site's overseeder, that we use there and everywhere else in the city.
But the high school is really the premier field.
Yeah.
So, that's why we have irrigation there, that's why we're treating it. That's where all the varsity sporting events are taking place. And the JV, but as Tony says, there is some spillover. And also, as rec continues to expand throughout the city, we have a working relationship with DAB for using more and more of the school fields after school. And then there's a relationship between us and Parks and Cemetery out of the PPW for maintenance of those fields, the non-high school fields, at different times of the year, so. But the high school field is literally the one that's getting 80% of the treatment.
And what about playgrounds?
Nothing used in playgrounds.
So, as far as what it do?
Any herbicidal treatment, any?
No.
The only thing we can use is bee spray if there's a yellow jacket nest or hornet nests that impacts students.
And then what do you do after you've sprayed it?
The nests?
Yeah.
Well, it depends if they fall or not.
There's one, yeah. Yeah, there's one right here.
It's a demo.
If anyone's listening to find out.
Yeah, right.
You know, yellow jackets will be like round nests, a lot of them are in the ground, so we just leave them, the spray will kill them. If they're in trees, we'll try to take the nest down, but-
Do you mark the spot and, you know, try to keep the kids away from, from it?
Yeah, for a little while. The principals are told, and they're all pretty aware, like, if there's a yellow jacket nest, yeah.
And the TruGreen people have protocol to advise the public when they spray?
TruGreen doesn't spray. Well, we spray if we use a bee spray with our own staff.
Okay, but when they fertilize?
When they fertilize, yeah. If we need to, so we do it off-season, or when there's no school, or during vacations, where there's no use for five days. This year, we had to do it, we didn't have a time period like that, so the state mandates a written protocol. So, we have a written notice that goes out, and this is an example of what that is. It lists, you know, the EPA registration number of the chemicals and like the data sheets. So, we post that like on the school department website, and then a Robo-Paw went out when the field's retreated.
Yeah, I heard some parents complaining about that. Hi, have a seat.
Yeah.
This was one of the first years we've done that. We normally don't have to, because if there's a five-day period between use and it's during a vacation, that's when we've typically been able to do it. This year, we couldn't, the athletic schedule was too complicated. Spring rain and just mud and things, so the schedule got condensed.
So, a while back, I think it was 2012, there was an article in the newspaper about, I think, Mass Live carried it. Maybe the Gazette also about how the Northampton schools were out of compliance with state pesticide laws. Were you around then?
I was not.
Okay.
Came in 2015.
Oh, okay. So, you're not aware of-
No, no.
What the infractions were and what, how they were corrected?
No knowledge of that.
How about you, Dave?
I've been here since 2007, but it's not ringing a bell at all. As Tony said, you have the grounds foreman, he's licensed, and we contract out for a lot of the work. So, I'm not sure, I'd have to see the article.
So, getting back to the bee spray, if you find a nest, I mean, do you, do you keep these chemicals somewhere? Do you have a central depository, or do you just-
It's like aerosol can.
So, you have, you have-
There are cans that are, yeah, stored in our ground shop. We have a ground shop on Prospect Street, behind the Survival Center.
Yeah.
The property back there is where our stuff is stored, yeah.
So, if somebody at one of the schools finds a bee's nest, they know to go over there to pick up the can?
No, no, no.
Or do they call somebody?
They contact us.
They call you and they ask you?
They contact me, or they contact one of our grounds people directly. Yeah, they're the ones that do it.
And I just have one more question, and then I'll turn it over to my fellow committee members here. But if I can remember what my question was, then I would ask it. But given that I've just forgotten what it is-
It'll come back to you.
It'll come back, but do you, do you-
I have a question, what is that spray that you use for the wasps?
It's called Sting X.
Another green.
Name another one.
Sting X.
Yeah, you can have a copy of this.
Awesome.
Another, yeah, catchy name.
So, that's when the wasps use that.
Is that information recorded anywhere, like, when it was used? Where do you keep your records of?
When we use the bee spray, no, we don't keep track of that.
Other question? Yeah?
So, there's been a push, and part of what is driving our questions in our committee to, around play fields, to use more organic methods, and I'm wondering, you know, what, what thoughts, you know, the city has had on that around, you know, any of the play fields that you guys are in charge of?
None, you know, we haven't discussed that as a method for the high school fields as of yet, no.
Alright.
Well, it's kind of out of your hands if contractors are doing it, TruGreen.
Well, we dictate what happens and how it happens, right? But, yeah, it's contracted.
You dictate which chemicals they use?
Well, they suggest to us what chemicals they're gonna use to treat the need on the field. They've been doing it for a number of years, so we try to use as little as possible to control what we need to. I mean, the grass, if you go down there, it's pretty good shape, there's not a lot of weeds, so we don't really do a lot of treatment for weeds. A lot of it is just fertilizer, keep the grass growing, keep it green.
Well, we will have discussions with them about, you know, hey, this is a school grounds, you know, and we want to know what the state of the art is right now versus what it was, let's say, 15 years ago. And that's part of our expectations, is to learn from them what they're using and expect, what they're gonna be using is as benign, as green, as they can use, and still get the job done, but also meet regulations.
And how, how often do you question them about that, the things you just mentioned?
Every treatment, they give us a report of what they apply. And we know ahead of time what they're gonna apply and when. It's seasonal, so, you know, early spring and then throughout the year.
Do you think it changes much year to year, what they use?
Probably not.
I don't think so.
Recently, no, I think going back a number of years, yes. I think chemicals have gotten more advanced.
Different.
And different in what they can treat selectively, got more advanced. So, it's not killing grasses, so they can not affect the grass, but just target the weed. I think that's gotten certainly better.
And has there been any discussion about discontinuing the use of any of these chemicals and just converting over to organic management?
Not a heartfelt discussion yet, I don't know. But in light of, you know, the issue of pollinators, and, you know, what we're trying to, we're starting to do on the side of Crafts Avenue here, you know, over to Mclasky Park, that's all certainly part of the discussion we'll be having as far as how, how we're promoting as much of this as we can while still addressing the issues that need to get addressed.
Okay, so, do you have other school-related questions?
Well, that's just a follow-up on that. What is, what are you learning, because we have these, these new pollinator gardens that, and I imagine we're not using all of these traditional methods.
Right.
What are we learning from that that might be transferable, or you haven't?
I think it's still new enough, Jim. I think, you know, we're, we're, the one on Crafts Avenue has been in since October. Same with Mclasky Park. Senior Center just did a rain garden expansion this weekend, so that'll be another lab area we can now look at. We are planning to complete the rest of Crafts Avenue Hill next month. We'll pull out all the turf that's there and basically run that pollinator bed all the way to the back where the EV chargers are. But what was done so far has been amazingly successful. Look at the number of pollinators and the activity and the butterfly activity.
You just helped one out the door.
Was that?
You just helped one out the door, that was amazing.
Redirected it over to Crafts Avenue.
Was that a bee or a wasp? That you helped out?
I think that was a yellow jacket.
Yeah, that was a wasp, it's been nasty.
He was very, he didn't seem to stop.
He was outnumbered.
He took the ride.
However, they do pollinate, wasps.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, a follow, so the turf over at Mclasky Park, that is managed organically, or is that, or do we subcontract for that? Is that, is that being handled differently?
I would defer to Director LaScalia if I had a question.
Okay.
It's not a turf, though.
So, that's a no?
I, I don't know.
We don't, that's always not my part of our goal.
So, that's not within your purview?
No, but it's also being managed by local harmony. And all their volunteers.
The turf is, or the pollinator garden?
Pollinator garden.
Just pollinator garden?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then-
So, I can certainly address the turf.
So, is this a good time to turn our attention over to what else Central Services does?
Sure. So, this is much easier, 'cause if you think about the city buildings, so the non-school buildings, so, you know, police station, two fire stations, the core buildings in the quad here. There's not any minimal lawn area. We have some shrub areas, there may be this much grass area where we do some plantings around the buildings, but we're not talking 40 acres of land, which is what we have all around the schools. So, it's much, much different focus. So, the grounds, I'm sorry, the maintenance crews on the city side, we do plantings for what grass there is. They will use a lime treatment, you know, with a spreader. That's the extent of a fertilization work they do. They maintain the flower beds, so, you know, bark mulch and plantings at various times of the year. And then in the interior of the buildings, similar to what we do in the schools, we have a contract with Premier, who we've had for years and years. And they'll come in and they'll deal with tracts for rodent activity every once in a while. Because of the base that the Senior Center sits on, it's a very sandy soil, we'll get ant infestations around the perimeter of the Senior Center. So, we'll bring Premier in for their standard controls. So, again, just like the schools, we sub that out. And we're, because of the, you know, the public spaces we're using, having Premier use as green products as we can. But it's a lot less activity, there's no lawn, there's no landscaping per se, as opposed to what we've got with the 4 acres of the schools. Much different protocol system that we're using.
Okay, and do you have any written material for us to include in our minutes or?
I will, will get you a Premier for both the city and the, uh, the school building. I'll get you their full list of, sort of, equivalent NSD ashes. Send those over to you.
And do they, uh, report to you how much they use in a given year?
Um, no, they will send us with their invoice, they'll send us a treatment report, uh, that explains what, what the, why they recall what the issue was and then what the treatment was. And in some cases, um, was it, like at Memorial Hall, last year we had a, uh, a rodent problem. Right, all the rain we had in the fall, it was driving all the odors inside the building. So we did a multi-month, uh, trapping and assessment program with Premier for them. So they weren't treating each time, but they were coming in, let's say, once a month or once every couple of weeks to check their traps, move the traps as needed based on evidence they were seeing. And then when spring came, the situation disappeared.
And these are glue traps only or?
Yes.
So if, uh, does anyone else have any more questions?
So in terms of the work that Premier does, is it on an as-needed basis or is it that, you know, they come in at routine times to apply certain products?
It's both. So in the case of the ants at the senior center, they would recommend, let's say, five treatments, spread over a two-month period. And I'll contract with them and they'll be there five times. Problem disappear, we don't need them anymore.
Okay.
Same with the rodents at Memorial Hall, once the problem is, was taken care of, you know, they say, well, we're done, we're not gonna, we don't need to go back anymore. So it's as needed or if it's an ongoing situation until the problem is resolved.
And the schools, it's almost, almost entirely as needed.
And my rodents, you're talking about the old ones, I'm guessing?
Yeah, we're talking a little bit bigger critters too.
Really?
Yes.
Other questions? So if the city, um, said to you, the city council in this case, said to you, we would like you to stop using pesticides or drastically reduce it, what would you do?
We would ask for a significant increase to our budget to support that. Going organic will be much more costly and much more labor intensive than what we're looking at. And we don't know that it's all as, as effective either, so we'd have to really study that more and get more information. We're really, truly trying to keep, you know, the stadium field is kind of a showcase field. You know, we have one of the nicest grassed fields in probably Western Mass. So for, you know, any of the sports, the varsity sports that play there, um, you know, support that. We keep it, that quality condition.
So if, uh, if it's one of the best fields in the area, does that mean that most teams are playing on fields that are not quite as gorgeous or perfect? So, um, um, what benefit is there to having a gorgeous field? If the teams can play on, on, you know, some dandelions and some other weeds? What's the benefit of having a perfect field?
Well, it's more than just the grass. It's the substructure, it's the levelness of the field, it's the fact that it's crowned properly, so the water sheds. There's a lot more than just sitting in the stands and seeing that nice green look.
Right, but none of those things that you just mentioned involve pesticides?
No, but it's a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
So seeding, fertilizing, you've gotta hold that field together.
Right.
So it's all part of the mix.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah.
And personally, I think Tony feels the same way. That, my feeling is that that field in the high school should stay as a turf field and not a synthetic field. There is a movement to go to a synthetic field.
No.
But you're talking literally millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Over the lifespan of that field, which, you know, think about where you're gonna spend your money.
Exactly.
It is a beautiful field as it now exists, and that's also due to the tremendous everybody, three-person grounds group that maintains that field. So we'll put a package together, how should we get the information to you?
Uh, you can send it directly to me, or we, we now have a new Gmail address for our committee that you could send it to.
Okay.
Which is, um, northhamptonpesticidereduction@gmail.com.
All one word, Bill?
All one word, no punctuation.
Pesticide reduction at Gmail.
Yep.
Okay, we will put a package together and scan this over to you and certainly follow up with us if we need additional information as you're, as you're moving forward.
I'll give you this stuff.
Yeah, thank you very much. Let's get right in and attach it to our minutes. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you.
Yeah. Sorry about the lack of refreshments.
Next time.
We'll add it to our, our budget for class.
Thank you.
See ya.
Thank you, thank you. Hi.
Hi, Dr. LaScalia, DPW. Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, do, uh, shall we introduce ourselves to you? We are the pesticide reduction committee.
Okay.
My name is Adele Franks, I am chairing this committee.
Uh, Cynthia Swobos, um, vice chair, secretary, and I'm on the board of health.
Jim Nash, Ward Three City Councilor.
And Kate Simmons, our environmentalist.
Yeah, very good.
And Alisa Klein is a member of our committee, but she's not here today.
Okay.
Welcome, thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah. So tell us about what areas of the city the DPW does maintenance on that microtine to pesticide use? And wait, just to make sure it's clear, the pesticides includes herbicides, fungicides, insecticides, rodenticides, every, all, all sides?
Yeah, start by saying that we don't use any herbicides, insecticides on any parks or recreation fields, Mclasky Park, nothing, we are one hundred percent organic. So there is no, uh, grub control, there's no synthetic fertilizers, there's, you know, none of that stuff that you, uh, spray on it on and turn it like fluorescent green. It's one hundred percent organic, and that's a transition that's gone on probably over the past three years. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but I just wanted to kind of lead with that. That's probably a little-known fact, um, that, that everything we do is a hundred percent organic. There's good things and bad things associated with that.
Yeah, we'd like to hear more about that, but you specified that was parks and recreation fields.
Parks, recreation, cemeteries, anything that's green, we do not use chemicals on any, in our forestry parks and cemetery operation, so no chemicals.
And, and, uh, just to understand the expanse, you also plow or, or put chemicals on the roads or?
Roadway salt.
Roadway, okay.
Yeah, that, that's, that's like snow and ice control.
Gotcha.
That kind of is what it is and, and, you know, it's not classified, it's a-
Pesticide.
Pesticide or herbicide, it kills snow. Um, so we do have, uh, a couple of things that we need to use, um, chemicals for. One of them is tree root control in the sewer system. We have to inject a foaming root killer into the sewer lines. And then we have a blade that, that kind of pushes the, the foaming root control, is kind of the blade term for it. So it, it sort of pushes these substances through the sewer lines. You know, tree roots love sewer lines, and the longer the sewer line is in the ground, the more opportunity there is for a tree root to sort of get into where the joints are. You know, the, the joints of the pipe can sort of degrade over time, and you never really notice it until that tree root starts to infiltrate, and tree roots are really the number one cause of sanitary sewer backups, which can negatively impact people's homes. Definitely happens more than we would like. So we have an annual program where we move around the city, we have a contractor come in and insert this piece of machinery into the sewer system and, and just blow this, um, this root killer right through the, uh-
And what is the root killer?
Um, it's a, it's called, bear with me here. It's called Razor Ruder Two.
Razor Ruder.
Razor Ruder Two, that really common trade name. The active ingredient is diquat, diromide.
Yeah, diquat.
Thirty-seven point three percent. So this is approved for use in our sewer system, and, and this is one of these things, like, there is no option. It is what it is, you want the sewage to flow, this is what we need to do to keep the sewage flowing. You know, every time there's a sewer claim for the city, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. And it's, um, you know, really the culprit is typically tree roots, and they grow faster than we would like. So that's one kind of little-known place where we, where we do have to do this.
And do you mind if I just ask a question about that particular application?
Sure.
So what happens at, so then you, you foam this stuff and you push it through?
Yeah.
And then how do you know if the tree roots are gone?
We camera it.
You camera?
Yeah.
And then, um, the place where the tree roots have come into the sewer system, there must be gaps there.
Yeah, I mean, we can see that there is infiltration happening. I mean, that's undesirable for many reasons. First of all, because there's a tree root in the pipe, but secondly, because that now allows groundwater to get into the sewer system, and that increases our flows at the wastewater treatment plant, which is very problematic because now we're treating groundwater, um, which is just a huge waste of time and money. So we do have a whole camera assembly, we have a specialized, like, man that's all set up with this camera, and we can see there's places where there has been this infiltration happening, so now that means, you know, we're gonna have infiltration of groundwater, so then we target this particular area for removal and replacement of, of this organ.
And then when the, this chemical gets to the sewer treatment plant, what happens to it?
It's just processed and, and goes out into the river. It, it goes through our treatment process, so it goes through, you know, our clarifiers and our irrigation. It has chlorine applied to it, um, you know, we have very strict effluent limits. We, we cannot discharge in excess of what our permit says we can discharge. You know, this, this chemical that's used is EPA approved, we're able to, I mean, basically, we are removing pollution from the water. It's the water pollution control facility. So, you know, there's a lot of things that people flush down the toilet that are really horrible for the river, and we have the ability to remove those things from the waste stream before they're discharged into the river. So we're very careful about what are we actually putting in the pipes to control these tree roots because, like, we're gonna have to deal with them on this end, and if it was forcing us out of compliance with our permit, um, that's a really big deal, and we obviously wouldn't do something like that. So what we are using is the least impactful product to get most bang for our buck, if you will, and not create problems for us on the other end. And I will mention we have very strict limits in our permit, I mean, it's non-negotiable. We test every single day. If our effluent quality is not where it's supposed to be, you know, we get, like, weird paperwork from EPA and DDP, and no one wants that. So, I mean, we, but we're not, like, fooling around there. I mean, this is, this is very serious, and anything we put into our system, we need to be able to take it out, right? And we can't, and that's why we use this product.
Okay, thank you.
So the, the, the foam kills the roots, that then allows this blade to come through? The, my question is, could the blade go through without the roots being killed?
Well, the roots will just come back.
Oh, okay, so it's, I got it.
Yeah, so the blade is turning as the, uh, as the razor ruder is being applied.
Got it, oh, okay.
So it's doing something, you know, it's some, you know, it's, it's basically like killing that end of the root.
It's like painting the roots so it doesn't-
There, yeah, it's like burning it right off.
Okay.
And it grows somewhere else that we want it to grow instead of into our sewer pipe. But, you know, we have a hundred and sixty miles of sewer pipes, and then that's a huge liability for the city. You know, I mean, I've been in people's basements when there's been a sanitary sewer overflow, it's really horrible.
It's not nice.
Not nice at all.
Yeah, I'm also sure they can see that at the wastewater treatment plant, like, they're monitoring for diquat.
I mean, it's so diluted, I mean, we're doing five million gallons a day, you know, by the time it gets there.
It doesn't exist by the time it gets up there.
It's so diluted, right, there's, there's nothing even there.
And I, I think I know the answer to this, but we don't have this issue with the stormwater system?
No, because there's no, there's no, yeah, there's no, like, nutrients, if you will. I mean, there are certainly nutrients in stormwater, but they're not that attractive to tree roots. I mean, it's, it's like-
It's not in sewer.
It's like instant fertilizer, you know? I mean, it's, it's why you put manure in your garden, it makes everything grow, you know? It's, it's kind of the same concept.
I'm good, but maybe I could just ask the, uh, the spelling of diquat?
D-I-Q-U-A-T. Uh, but hold on, D-I, yeah, D-I-Q-U-A-T, I'm sorry.
That's, oh, okay, that's what I know.
Can I?
U-A-T-A-O-T. Okay. And the, the razor ruder, the razor ruder two is actually a process that includes-
No, it's a, it's a product.
Oh, it is a product.
It's a combination of the diquat and diromide.
Okay, and, uh, you're gonna give us the handout thing?
I'll give you the section if you'd like it, sure.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing we do is we, um, we have to institute rodent control procedures. We have sewer rats.
Oh.
They get into people's houses.
Not into the yard.
Yeah, so, um, they get into the wastewater plant, they take you, we get into the neighborhood around the wastewater treatment plant, um, so we have to control them. We control them with a product called Contract, C-O-N-T-R-A-C. And the active ingredient, and that is bromadiolone, B-R-O-M-A-D-I-O-L-O-N-E. These are packets, you put them into manholes, you place them around the wastewater plant. There are no other options, so this is what we use.
And what, that kills them?
Yes, yes, it's like this three-out death. And these are not, like, friendly, but all feel nice, these are sewer rats, and there's a difference, so. So anyway, we just wanna make sure that people don't get unexpected visitors in our houses, yards. We had an issue on Monroe Street earlier this year, we had a little bit of an infestation down there. You, you just never really know where they're gonna pop up. I mean, we, we really tried to avoid doing this, but did, it just kind of is the nature of the business. It's a sewer and there's rats. So anyway, those are, those are kind of the two sewer wastewater related issues. You know, obviously, we don't like using these types of products. There, there is no alternatives that we are aware of, you know? It's not feasible to put most traps in a sewer system.
Or have cats everywhere.
Yeah, right, it's that book, it's like, the cat ate the rat, and then the rabbit dogs eat the cats, and then they brought in something else to eat the dogs, I don't remember, and they ended up-
Oh, the house to chat, Bill.
They, they ended up with rats at the end of the farm, you know? So, I, I mean, there is, there is really no alternatives to this. I mean, people expect the sewer system to work, and this is what we need to do to make it work. So there's probably like one of these really inglorious things that the DPW is in charge of. You know, it's, uh, not something I talk about a lot, except when I appear in front of a committee like this. So, so anyway, that's the sewer system. I can talk a little bit about the work we just did on the levees, 'cause maybe that's on your mind. We are under very strict requirements from the Army Corps of Engineers to control vegetation on our levee system, which is miles long. Most of it we are able to mow, we have to mow it and keep the grass at a certain length so that Army Corps can do like a visual inspection. So this is sort of problematic, there's a group that's, um, very fond of monarch butterflies, and they don't want us to mow the embankments and, you know, because it's like a monarch habitat. And, I mean, I love monarch butterflies too, but, like, we have rules that we have to follow. So, again, like, we have, you know, regulatory authorities who watch us very carefully and- everything we do is based on what their requirements are. Um, so we mow what we can on the levees, there are places in the levees, um, primarily in the Mill River diversion channel that are riprap because the slope is very, very forbidding, the riprap holds the slope together, um, particularly if there's like a corner, you know, if that water were to start sort of rushing through, it would very easily erode the corner, which is why you have these big rocks there. So vegetation grows on the rocks, I mean, it's just kind of like the way it is and we can't get out of it with a machine, you just, you just can't get there, we call them ankle busters, you know, like you're, you're trying to navigate, you know, and there's these huge boulders on a slope like this. So, you know, we're running a two million dollar stormwater utility and we just spent four hundred thousand dollars on mechanical removal of vegetation in the Mill River diversion channel, um, as well as, um, it, it, actually in both systems, so the Mill River system and the Connecticut River system. So we had, you know, a crane come in and remove all these trees, we had someone go through and like hand dig out, you know, what they had to or what they were able to, you know, once something has a three inch trunk or greater, Army Corps requires not only does it come out, but all the roots come out too, and then you have to do like remediation in the levee because theoretically the levee could be undermined by the roots. So this is a really big expensive deal and, you know, running a two million dollar utility to spend four hundred thousand dollars on mechanical removal of trees is not an insignificant amount of money. And as you know, probably from your own yard, you know, you mow the lawn and a week later it's back. So we have invasives that love these really sunny riprap banks of the levees and, you know, we have people go through and mechanically control them and like a week later, you know, here we go again. And financially, this is like not sustainable for us, I can't spend four hundred thousand dollars every year, you know, having some guy go out with a weed whacker. Uh, so what we did and what we are able to do is every six years, we can go through and do a spot application of herbicide. So this was like one guy with a backpack sprayer with glyphosate, which is a heavily regulated chemical that has gotten a very bad rap because, you know, there's been multi-million dollar judgments against it, like in California and other states. And it was one guy with a backpack sprayer for two days doing a foliar application of this on these invasives on a very steep section of riprap. And what this does is it kills the invasive and we all move on. And it's, it's, I mean, the guy didn't even have a mask on, he had no protective gear on. It was, it was done under the, uh, there, there was an inspector from the National Department of Agriculture there, you know, we had multiple permits for this, it's a chemical that is approved for use in our waterways. So it, it was a very limited one-time application of this particular product to control a very specific product. If, uh, if we decided that we weren't gonna do this sort of vegetation control, like if, if we were just gonna say, okay, we need to manage, you know, invasives by hand, you know, or get some special machine, you're looking at increasing the value of the utility exponentially. So if that's a direction that the city wanted to go in, I would say I need another half a million dollars a year and I can hire a whole team of contractors and they can, when they're all summer long, it pick these things up by hand. Because you pick them out and they're back, you know, I mean, that's the nature of invasive, there's no known, um, predators, isn't the right word, but, you know-
Invaders.
Yeah, I mean, you just can't-
So every six years, that's enough to keep them bang?
It, I mean, it's not preferable, but, but this was done six years ago, because if you do it more frequently, you actually need a vegetation management plan, which is a whole process unto itself, there's like public hearings and public process, this is like what National Grid has, they have a vegetation management plan where they say, you know, we're gonna come through every September, we're gonna spray, you know, this area with this product, with this many gallons of product and so on and so forth. So that's not something the city has, it's not something I'm interested in the city having, I'm not interested in the frequent use of herbicides, we do what we can to control this manually, we'll keep an eye on the riprap section, it is my hope that this application has solved our problem and we can all move on. But again, if this was something that the city said, you know, we're never gonna use herbicide on the levee again, then we need to have a very serious conversation about how we are going to reconfigure the utility to add a significant amount of money, like six figures, to it to fund this endeavor. Because Army Corps wants the vegetation at a certain level, on the riprap, they want nothing. You know, so we control what we can control, where we can control it, but there's just some places that we can't get to. So that's just some commentary on the levees, and again, very heavily, heavily regulated, I mean, I think we had like six or seven permits and an inspector from the state.
Wow.
It, you know, which is really ironic if you think about it, you can go to Home Depot and buy as much Roundup as you could fit in your car-
And use as much as you want.
And throw it into the air in the middle of downtown and there is no one and nothing that will stop you.
That's right.
And, you know, we wanna do a very targeted application in a very specific place, you know, for a very specific reason and be regulatory hoops that we had to jump through and then like actually having an inspector standing there like this, you know, watching this licensed applicator, you know, spray it onto a little leaf, you know, and, and that was actually what this was, this is not helicopter spraying, this is, you know, a guy with a backpack sprayer, so.
So it's not DPW that does the actual spraying, it's-
No, we contracted, contracted, so we had a specialized contractor came in from New York City, it's all these people do.
Uh, and how big was that area, that river?
It was the Mill River diversion channel, so it's probably, you know, grand total, maybe half a mile or something, um, but very-
It took one guy two days?
It took one guy two days because he had to walk, like, he couldn't walk.
Yeah, he had to, but-
That, yeah, that was, I mean, if it was like on a flat surface, he would've been done in an hour, you know, but it was just the terrain was really, really difficult, so. It was, and he came from New York every morning, so by the time like he got there and, you know, limped his way up and down riprap, it was a two-day operation.
Yeah.
But that's why, you know, there was, there was a little bit of publicity around this when it happened and I just can't stress to people, like, like you can actually go to Home Depot and, and buy cases of Roundup, they fill this room, you can, you can, you know.
My mother did, you know, and it's, it's just kind of, uh-
Hi, come on in.
Hi, Robert.
Yeah, so I, I just wanna say around the, uh, application on the levee, DPW did a great job of notifying people and the information that you supplied to me and neighbors was terrific. Also, in terms of, you know, helping people understand that this has to do with making sure that the levee system is certified, because that's actually related to, uh, property insurance, that if the dike isn't certified, almost half of downtown now has to get flood insurance. So the, the, um, so that's the, the other end of the, um, the, the, the scale that DPW was weighing, um, is in terms of, you know, what, um, what they're, what they're gonna do to take care of vegetation on the dump.
Yeah, and the, the soonest we could do something like this again, and the something would be exactly what we just did, would be six years because we lack this vegetation management plan, which we have no plans to pursue. And, you know, who knows, maybe there's some sort of different machine six years from now that we, you know, some sort of like big hydraulic sidearm or something that we could, you know, throw over onto the riprap bank and just knock this stuff down and it, they make some really cool machinery. You know, the problem is, it's riprap, you know, if, if this were a, a smooth slope, I'd have a little more option, I just don't really have an option on the riprap, so our best option is just to kill this stuff with the roots and move on, I mean, eventually it comes back, but it's, it's gonna take it away. Um, so I, I just wanted to cover that because I know that you knew that we could, that we could done some work and there was a little bit of publicity around that, but it's a very, very isolated and very particular reason. So, um, I'll just talk a little bit about, um, what we're doing on the athletic fields and parks, so we're maintaining hundreds of acres of cemetery, these parks, recreation fields, it's, as I mentioned, a hundred percent organic, um, we use cultural practices like aeration and overseeding, um, with the Kentucky, with a Kentucky bluegrass mix, so at least thirty percent, so Kentucky bluegrass is like a really prolific grower, it like keeps rooting itself, so like strawberries, I don't know if you've ever grown strawberries and they just keep like rooting and rooting and rooting, um, so that's why we use Kentucky bluegrass, um, we mow at a higher height, you know, instead of having, you know, golf course-esque, it's a little more country lawn type, um, and we use organic fertilizer. And so that's everywhere, every field all across the city, every park all across the city, um, we use, uh, uh, something called nematodes that kill grubs, um, so we use these on Florence Fields, we flatten them in October, that way I have the cower site that basically borrows into the grubs and kills them. Um, you know, but these things are like really, I don't wanna say freaky, but they're, like, you can only apply them at night and you can only apply them, you know, I don't wanna say like their full moon, but they're like very, it's like a very particular-
They're creatures.
-application product, so, you know, if you were to put them out now, they die before they did anything, you know, so like there's, yeah, a- and this is really what I wanna stress, like there is a significant cost to doing what we are doing, we're using corn gluten to prevent crabgrass instead of the stuff you buy at Home Depot and just throw it around and like your crabgrass goes away. Um, we use something called vinegreen, which is just a vinegar solution to control weeds, you know, it's not as effective as Roundup, I mean, it's, it, it just isn't, you know, it's, it's like an all natural alternative to vinegar, so that means we need to buy more of it and we need to apply it more often and we need to apply it under really controlled circumstances. You could go out in a rainstorm and throw Roundup down and it kills everything, well, vinegreen, like you wanna do it right now, you know, cause like if it rains, it's like-
It dilutes it.
Yeah, it's like spilling vinegar on your counter and you wash it up, you know, so it's, it's kind of that sort of dynamic. Um, you know, one of the things that's, or several of the things, and you can probably speak to this more so than I can, um, but typical fertilizers contain really high volumes of phosphorus, potassium, and urea, which contaminates waterways, so you get this, you know, fertilizer runoff phenomenon, which creates algae blooms. So interestingly, when we look at our wastewater treatment plant permit, which is about to be reissued by EPA, everyone's gonna have nitrogen limits because Long Island Sound is completely contaminated by nitrogen, I mean, there's many reasons for this, but fertilizer runoff is definitely a big part of that, but you know what, nitrogen makes everything green and, you know, everyone loves how a nice green field looks, but it also like makes things grow in the water. Um, so, you know, we're very mindful of all of this, so we do what we can to create an environment where the grass is gonna thrive, but you're not gonna see that beautiful fluorescent green lawn. And interestingly, there was a study in my department done before I was the director, so back in twenty fifteen, and one of the things that the study said was like the fields look horrible. And, you know, it, it, I don't wanna say the fields look horrible, I mean, but the fields are not perfect and the fields are not perfect for a reason, um, because it takes chemicals to make the fields perfect. So, you know, we use organics to try to feed the soil, enhance nutrient activity, you know, you spray Miracle-Gro on a plant, it makes the plant grow, you use organics, you enrich the soil and then the soil makes the plant grow, so it's, there's sort of patience, you know, there's, and, and there's cultural practices, and what I will say is this stuff is expensive. It's expensive, the products are expensive, it, but most importantly, the labor is expensive. So every, you know, and I can't necessarily quantify and say, wow, this is taking three times as long, but what I will tell you is this is general fund money, we have a very limited budget, I mean, we're running the entire parks, forestry and cemetery operation on two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars a year, that is not a lot of money for, for the amount of acres we are controlling and for what the public expects of us. Ninety thousand dollars of that we're spending on seed and fertilizer. And I have people working seven days a week, not twenty-four hours a day, but many, many evenings at time and a half, anything after three o'clock is time and a half, so there is a significant cost to doing what we are doing, so when I come before City Council and say, you know, I need an increase in my budget, well, there's a reason I need an increase in my budget, because if we're out there throwing GrubX around or if we're out there throwing crabgrass filler around or, you know, let me get the bag of ten, ten, ten and just, you know, run it off, like this is much easier, it's much cheaper, it's much faster, you know, you do it once and, and you're done, so this is a-
Short, thank you. So why would the, uh, switch me three years ago?
I, I mean, primarily just in awareness that this is, I mean, this is harmful, you know, this is not, um, this is not like, I mean, it might actually be industry best practices, but this is not really the direction that we want the DPW to go. We feel that it, you know, really, like, when I talk about sewer rats, like, I don't have an option, you know, but do we have an option with all of our fields? And the answer is, yeah, we do. I mean, remember, when Florence Field opened, it was all organic, so that was before I arrived there, so then the question was, you know, can we actually transition to that in the rest of the city? And we had moved in that direction, I've been able to work with the mayor and increase the funding, but again, this is general fund money and it's not glorious, I mean, this is not sexy, this is not, you know, more police and firefighters, it's not even more personnel for the DPW, I mean, it's actually just taking the people you have and now they work sixty hours a week, but it's not attractive for me to show up at City Council and say, well, I need to buy some corn gluten and, you know, like it costs fifteen thousand dollars, you know, so therefore you need to vote for that, I mean, it's, it's not like, uh, you know, it's just not really glorious and there's always some cost associated with doing what we're doing, I mean, we're doing it, but if we ever get to a place where we need to start making some decisions or we need to cut or something, you know, there's a lot of money here.
And is Charles Park included in your purview?
We, no, we are not, um, so, we are not responsible for Charles Park.
It's private. Yeah, so, uh, okay, so, um, we don't know, uh, do we know who takes care of Charles Park, who does maintenance there?
Don't know.
Okay.
I haven't been to that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, I will ask you later. Um, other questions?
Um.
How many acres of, uh, parks and cemeteries and fields do you oversee?
Um, yeah, I'll get you an exact number, so, it's about ninety acres of cemeteries, um, parks is-
Hundreds. Hundreds, right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get you an exact number.
Okay, thank you. Quite a balancing act you're performing.
Every day.
Well, there is, I think the question you need to ask is what is absolutely non-negotiable for the public here, you know, like rats in your basement are not something you want, like there's no tolerance for that and if, well, you know, I'm trying to like relocate them or, you know, I don't think anyone wants to hear about that, so really, I mean, just across the board when I'm not in the department, that's the sort of things I have to think about, like what is, what do I absolutely have to do, there's, there's, you know, some things you just gotta do whether you wanna do them or not and then there's some things where you have a little more flexibility.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you for your commitment though to, to this, it's really amazing.
Yeah, it's reassuring to know that you're at the helm.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good, I mean, I get great staff, great superintendents in place and, and really intelligent people who thoroughly research things and, you know, understand like the big picture, you know, it'd be a lot easier, you know, Rich Parsletti, I'm sure you guys know him, is the, the superintendent of this division and he's very, very knowledgeable about all of these processes and, and he's really the one who said, you know what, I think we can do this. And, yeah, I give him a lot of credit for making this happen, but it is important for everyone to understand, like this is a real feel-good story, but- But dot, 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 you know, and, and there is a but.
Yeah, and the City Council needs to be aware of that.
Particularly because it's general fund money and, you know, the, the forestry, parks, and cemetery budget is not like intra- you know, I don't, I don't mean interesting, but it's just not like this real glorious thing, you know? It's, it's, it's more of a, um, you know, it, it, it's, it's not like, uh, so nice, you know, we gotta do it. Or, or potholes, like we gotta do it, you know? This is a little, it's a little extra, if you will.
And if you emphasize that it's, the extras for the organic management, I'm sure our City Council will be very sympathetic.
Yeah, I, this, this is actually better than I expected. I mean, I was expecting good news from DPW around the, the way we care for our properties. And, and it's also based on discussions with Mr. Par- Parsaletti. Did I see his name right?
Parsaletti.
Parsaletti. And that, um, and that I know that, yeah, the Florence Fields discussion really, you know, prompted some rethinking um, across the city, you know, both for citizens and, and for the city. And that, uh, Mr. Parsaletti, you know, he, he's really helped inch us towards these changes. And it's, uh, it's, it's pretty cool. So this was part of the good news I was expecting to come out, but this is even better.
It really comes down to money, you know? You can have all the great ideas in the world, but if, it, you know, if you say, okay, I have a finite amount of funds and I need to maintain X amount of space, you know, so what I have to do with Rich and say, you know, this is the amount of money I can give you, what can you make happen with this? Because the public is not gonna tolerate some crabgrass-infested, grub-infested, you know, uneven. I mean, you heard Dave Conrance allude to this. You know, grubs eat the grass and cause potholes. And then you've got, you know, kids running around playing soccer and someone falls over because they hit this grub-infested section of field. And like, that's a big deal and, and the public is not going to tolerate that, no matter how good our intentions are. Like it's, it's just not acceptable. So what we have to do, you know, what I have to do is work with the mayor to get the appropriate level of funding and then say, Rich, can you make this work? And that's, you know, a good relationship that all of us have. And we've been very successful and we're very proud of what we've done, you know, over the past few years.
How much ongoing training is required?
There's, you know, there's CEUs for your pesticide applicator license, um, you know, which I think steer, which several people in my department have just because, you know, pesticides used to be a thing. Um, but the state is actually starting to, you know, steer towards more organic management. Um, you know, and there's certainly plenty of seminars out there and, and educational programs through us particularly. So, you know, we avail ourselves of that to the extent possible. But again, there's a cost for everything, you know? So like your seminar, it's a thousand bucks, you know? That's all coming out of the two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars, so, which is really not a lot of money. And divide that by fifty-two, that shows you, you know, what we're running every week. And if ninety thousand dollars of that is fertilizer, it doesn't leave a lot of money for things like, you know, gas. Want a lawnmower, you know? So it's, I mean, it's definitely a balancing act.
Yeah, yeah, understood. Other questions?
Just one more, and I'm not sure this is DPW, but mosquito control, is that Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Yes, okay. So they know their question's coming.
So I'll leave you, um, I'll leave you my razor rooter cut sheet and my rat killer cut sheet. And I'll get you the total, I, I'm sorry, I just can't recall the total number of, uh, parks. I'll put it off in my head.
Thank you so much.
That's it. Sure.
Thank you, Director.
You're all.
All right.
Hi, Meredith.
Hi.
You can sit wherever you like. We want you to be comfortable and we want you to be within view of the camera because this, this is an open meeting that's being filmed. Is that your good side?
Yes, they are.
Um, let's introduce ourselves to you. My name is Adele Franks. We've met, um, I'm chair of this committee.
No me.
Thank you.
I'm actually, that's not, you're correct, no, Kate Simmons. It's Kathleen.
Kate Simmons, okay.
Oh, it's okay, but I'm an environmental chemist. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Get out the shirt.
I think we ought to just cross it out, you know, really.
Uh, well, thank you for coming to visit with us. We are interested in hearing about your use of pesticides, which includes, um, all things with the word side, with the term side at the end, herbicides, rodenticides, insecticides, et cetera. And, uh, we have reason to believe that primarily you would be involved in mosquito issues.
Correct.
So why don't you start by telling us what you do with those?
The only side that we use is larvicide, uh, for mosquito control currently. So, um, we treat, well, actually we hire a company to treat. We outsource it. It's contractor Mosquito Squad is who we use. Um, we treat all of our catch basins that are in areas where people congregate, um, high residential areas, where people may be at risk for contracting any mosquito-borne, if you call it arbor virus, disease. So we treat those catch basins three times a year. And we treat our known breeding areas. So we treat the meadows, um, some standing water that we're aware of with this larvicide application, which is the BTI briquettes that we use. The BTI briquettes, um, they are active for thirty days. So we are on rotation. We, we do like, uh, our schedule is like the end of April, first week of May, and then every thirty days after to get us through the season to treat the breeding areas. We don't treat for nuisance, we treat for disease.
So how do you determine that treatment is needed?
Well, we do a risk map, um, again, where people congregate. So say our downtown, we make sure that we treat all of our catch basins in downtown because our catch basins have organic material in them, which is where the mosquitoes, our vector mosquitoes, like to breed in. So we look at risk maps based on land use and water.
Okay, so it's not based on, um, diseases that have occurred, it's prevention?
It's prevention.
Mm-hmm. And then, and then how would you handle it differently if there is, um, an outbreak?
Sure, well, that's not, um, there's not an overarching umbrella for that, for, to answer that question. It is really dependent. So we do surveillance, um, we're part of the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District. And we set traps all around the city throughout the season, mosquito season, to see what's happening. What mosquito species are in our area? And then we look at those mosquito species and we see what disease they carry. So if we start getting positive hits of these types of mosquitoes, these vectors carrying the viruses, we'll treat a little more aggressively in that area of our known breeding ground. So we'll look at where we've treated, have we missed any standing water, so on and so forth. Um, other communities that are part of, um, mosquito districts may take that data and do some, um, uh, what do they call it? Direct ground spraying? Or depending on if we're just looking at mosquitoes carrying the virus or humans now acquiring the virus, as you see in the news, they might do, DPH might declare a public health emergency and do aerial spraying. So it's really dependent on what's going on and what your findings are.
But you, uh, locally, only use BTI?
We only use BTI right now.
Mm-hmm.
And again, this might be reevaluated after the season. Um, this is certainly an anomaly in terms of disease in triple E.
I have read that, um, uh, the mosquito that carries zika has been found in Massachusetts now, so I imagine that's.
Been found here in Northampton two years ago. It's the allopictus that carries zikas and it also carries yellow fever and a whole plethora of different diseases, dengue fever. We trapped it over in the, um, the old junkyard, uh, car junkyard on South, on Route Ten right there. Can't think of the name of it, um, South Street?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so it's here. Um, at that point, when we trapped it, we were told by DPH, we don't know if it's proliferating here, if it was brought in. So more of a seasonal type of thing, brought in from whatever, off a boat from an old tire or something like that. Or if it's actually here and breeding here, that's yet to be determined. But it has moved its way all the way up to the northeast and there are known pockets of where it might actually be breeding. And I wouldn't discount Northampton being one of them.
Mm-hmm. And, um, but to date, your response to that is to simply be more aggressive with the BTI?
With surveillance, doing surveillance to see if we actually have breeding here. The BTI, uh, doesn't target, you know, it, it doesn't affect non-targeted species from what I know. We have used, um, we, the company that we use was using other sources of larvicide, which we thought, um, was a little more toxic and could affect some of the non-targeted species. So we asked them to use this. Um, again, it's thirty-day active, uh, active shelf life. And then, um, what else is there about it? I don't know. We use about three, thirty-five-hundred briquettes a season. We treat our catch basins, um, with about twenty-five-hundred of those briquettes. And then we treat the meadows and other known breeding sites with about twelve-hundred other briquettes or so, give or take. We treated a little more aggressively this year because of what was going on.
Other questions?
Meredith, I just wanna make sure 'cause I'm taking minutes. Mosquito doctor is who we use?
Mosquito squad.
Mosquito squad.
Same difference. Uh, and are there other, um, besides mosquito control, are there any other, um, insect-related or herbicide-related issues that the, um, your department deals with?
Not at all.
I remember.
Is that your question as well, Alice?
I, it's a great question. I think it wasn't my question.
Oh, okay, well, then you're next.
Oh, you're next. I remember you saying one time, Meredith, there was, there's this neighborhood, right, that calls you along. So there's neigh- there's people that call and say, we have so many mosquitoes. How do you respond?
So it depends on the calls coming in. Usually this neighborhood calls in late April, so spring, very wet. The mosquitoes active in that springtime, early spring, late springtime are nuisance mosquitoes. They are usually not our vector mosquitoes. So, um, there are things that you can do around your home to, to reduce, um, breeding sites, you know, cleaning your gutters. We talk about things that they can do, talking with your neighbors. I mean, breed, the mosquitoes can breed in small, you know, something as small as like a quarter-size little puddle. If that is standing water for seventy-two hours, you will get mosquito breeding. So we talk about that and we do education around that. Um, but it's very important that they know the difference between nuisance mosquitoes and vector mosquitoes.
So when they call, you're not like, we're going out there, we're spring?
No, no.
And isn't it true that most active at dawn and dusk?
So different mosquitoes, so the ones that carry West Nile virus are kind of day flyers and they're active and they're looking for a blood meal then. But the ones that are, carry triple E are right after dusk and dawn. Mm-hmm. Between dusk and dawn.
When does come dawn?
Uh, after, sorry. Mm-hmm. In the evening into early morning. That's when they're active looking for a blood meal. They say that backwards.
No, my understanding was at dawn and then dusk are the times you'll encounter most mosquitoes. That was my understanding, but I don't know where I got that from. Is that true?
Um, there are a lot of mosquitoes that are active between those periods, but we're, you know, again, with disease, the disease that are known here, endemic here, in Western Mass, we're considered, we take into consideration both. But you might find a lot more species that are more active during those times than the daytime.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
So when you say vector mosquitoes, is that a particular type of mosquito? Or is that a mosquito that had, you know, it's a type of mosquito that's known to carry a virus? I mean.
Exactly, so there are two-hundred-and-fifty known mosquitoes out there that have been identified. Right, so there are a lot of them. But there's a subset that we're really concerned about that can pick up and carry a virus. So like our, um, our West Nile virus, um, it goes, the cycle goes from bird to mosquito. So the mosquito picks it up from bird and then brings it to a human. We call that a vector mosquito, that it carries that known virus, which we're concerned about.
Okay.
So you're saying there are a fewer species that are actually carrying diseases?
Yes.
Disease-related organisms.
Mm-hmm. The mosquito is the number-one killer in the world every single year. Kills more people than anything else, this little, little flying insect. It's crazy.
I, I guess if you add in malaria, that would, that would be a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we don't have malaria here yet.
So I have a question from, it, it, from a constituent. He emailed me last we could hit to do with a, uh, a tire retailer. And that, um, does the, right now with the concern about the mosquitoes breeding in old tires, is, are there protocols that people are supposed to be following, um, in terms of storing old tires? Uh, do you guys go out and check? Who, who would go and look into this?
We don't go out and check. We send out information at the beginning of every single season to our dealers that we know that store these types of materials.
Right.
Um, that's all we can do. Or we'll go up by complaint if someone calls us and says, this is what we see. Another issue is like, um, standing water in swimming pools, you know? Someone's not opening their pool, um, that that water is stagnant. And again, we're not out looking for it, but if a call comes in, we'll address it.
So this person who's concerned should call the Health Department?
Mm-hmm, and we can't treat on private property. That's the other thing, we can only treat on public property.
But wouldn't just dumping over the water just kind of, that, pretty much?
A little maintenance, yeah.
So there's no pesticides involved in that? It's just?
Getting rid of the, right, standing water.
Everything for green.
Ditch maintenance if it's, you know, something that needs to be done more on a ground level.
Mm-hmm. So if you do go out into complaint and you find standing water, what do you do?
Um, I would send a nuisance letter to remove, to have the water removed.
Even if it's a swimming pool?
Yeah, if, if they're not using their swimming pool, um, or treating it with chemical disinfectant, um, yeah, we would ask them to do something.
So chlorination is.
Chlorination is fine, yeah.
Works, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I lived down in one of those neighborhoods, it might be mine that calls a lot, but I don't think so, but we sure could. Um, that, uh, I, I have noticed, especially this year, the nuisance mosquitoes are way down. So.
And the mosquitoes in our traps are way up, so I feel like, yeah, yeah.
So there's more mosquitoes, actually?
There's more mosquitoes, but we're treating our known breeding areas, so we're reducing them. But we're trapping, um, where they like to go after they breed, so.
Oh, so. Can you explain that because they breed?
The mosquito population on the whole, you know, throughout Massachusetts is really high this year just because of our previous season, really wet spring. Um, so the population on a whole is a high. But in Northampton, especially because we're aggressively treating, I feel like our numbers are relatively low for the, our vector mosquitoes. Um, and, but yet we're still getting a lot in our traps, but we're not having to have to test them all because they're not our, our vector mosquitoes. I feel like we're doing a really good job. This is the first season since I've been the director in Northampton that we haven't had any positive West Nile virus, um, mosquitoes, mosquitoes carrying West Nile virus, which is fantastic. I, I, I would like to say it's because we're being proactive, um, not really sure. But we've been doing the same testing now for about four years straight. And then it was kind of intermittent the years prior to that, um, because we weren't part of a program that that testing. So we were doing it independently. Um, but yeah, we've not had any positive specimens to date. What I gave you was, I gave you, um, the MSDS sheets for the active ingredient that's used in the BTI. And I've also given you just a real, um, brief, brief report of the mosquito control. of the mosquito control that we're doing in the catch basins in the Meadow area and exactly which catch basins we're treating, we're treating throughout the city. So if that helps at all.
And then the number of times where, you said it, I just didn't catch it, treating the catch basins?
Three times a year.
So Director Liscalia mentioned the cost related to using strategies that you, that are less toxic or that there's costs related to that. In terms of your department, I, you know, I would imagine, I don't know how long we've been used, are these briquettes, are they?
They're briquettes.
Are they, is this affordable? Is there, what economic pressures are there to figure out around this?
Sure, right, and they're, and they have to be hand-placed. So somebody's actually walking the streets and putting them in, or walking the meadows. I mean, they're not done by any machine, so it has to be done by hand. We spend about, I want to say fourteen thousand a year on prevention with the briquettes. And about another six thousand a year on surveillance. And the mayor's put this in my budget, he started maybe about four or five years ago. DPHW used to do all the catch basins, but the person who had the pesticide applicator's license back then had retired. So we were kind of in transition and that's when I brought to him this proposal, outsourcing it and having it go under the health department. Because it just made better sense because they treated just to treat where it wasn't based on risk of disease. So it saved money.
So this is considered a pesticide that requires someone with a pesticide license?
It does.
So what would you do if you, in your trapping, you found large amounts of vector-bearing mosquitoes?
So I would treat West Nile and triple E differently. If it was West Nile, I would do a huge public information push out there. There are guidelines that are given to us by DPH and we've had to use them before when we've had a lot of West Nile virus positive hits. And things that I would do on top of just general information to the public is we actually had to ask all city and parks and recreation, school activities that took place after certain hours, that they refrain from doing so. So we've had to do that in the past. We've never gotten to a place where we actually had to do any type of treatment outside of that. But just based on the mosquito surveillance, those are the recommended guidelines by DPH. If it was human disease that was popping up, there was an uptick in human disease, that would look a little differently. We might talk about doing pesticide application, whether truck-mounted or aerial, depending on what the disease was and what our risk of getting the disease is, and DPH will set that.
So you don't know which pesticides are being detected by DPHs?
So you, you've never had to do that in your experience?
No, I haven't.
That's great. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and all this information.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, there's a lot to digest. Who knew we had so many types of mosquitoes?
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty, that's pretty amazing. All right, well, I don't think we're going to be able to digest this information as a, in a committee meeting unless you all want to have at least some preliminary discussions based on what we just learned.
Are there any more departments we're expecting to hear from? I was keeping track of the score. That's it? Okay, cool. Nice work.
It, just on first blush, it sounds like the area where we might focus our attention might be on this True Green contractor and the high school athletic fields. It seems to be where most of the pesticides are being used to maintain this glorious field. So that's something for us to chew on.
But at the same time, they have the invoices from them. Didn't you say they?
They don't have quantities, but they have the invoices. Did we ask for copies of those?
We did, I was thinking about it, but I know it was a little too pushing.
Okay, well, let's, all right, so we need to ask, and that was only for the high school, so that would be Tony. I just saw Mark by. Okay, so that would be from True Green.
From a period of time, perhaps?
Yeah.
Like for what period of time?
For all of twenty eighteen?
The thing I noticed is that there's different techniques and different approaches being used by city departments. And that, that I think that there could be some crossover discussion there in terms of practices. I was really impressed that all of our rec fields, you know, are a hundred percent organic. And, you know, I played softball for years out at Mainsfield and I was not aware of that. And that, that, I mean, it never looked like a lot had been applied there, but the, the turf is actually pretty often in pretty good condition. And that, and the other thing is that Donna talked about the different practices that they're doing, you know, there's overseeding, there's aeration, you know, keeping the mowers at a higher height, which, you know, in terms of turf is, it's a good idea, you know, it's from my discussion. So I took, I had the, I support students in college settings sometimes. And one time I got to sit in for a semester on Scott Eddin's turf management class at UMass. And Scott is the expert over there. And, and he talked about all of these techniques, these, these different cultivation techniques as being ways that you can minimize the use of, of chemicals. It also matches up with what my neighbor Bernadette Giblin, who's also an expert on organic turf management, that there, there's overlap there. There's other places where the two of them would not agree at all, you know, in terms of, and, and where the difficulty gets into is, is the amount of wear and the expectation of the people using the, the field, the play field. And you were touching on it a bit, Adele, that, that if the expectation is going to look like an NFL football field, then, yeah, you, you, you need to be pretty aggressive. But, you know, could it look like Mainsfield? Where, you know, Mainsfield probably doesn't get the wear and tear that, you know, that a football team followed by a soccer team, followed by a cross team put on, on a play field. So those are, those are the other things that get factored in. But, but I do think that, you know, there may, you know, that I, there could be some discussion between the departments and in terms of what they've learned. And that, because I, I don't think we can specifically go after a particular play field or department for what they're doing, but we can say that we see these different practices. And that maybe, you know, because our goal is reduction, maybe there could be some discussion there. And that, and also in terms of if we're contracting to people, let's take some bids from, you know, I, I note that Councilor Klein was interested in, you know, looking into grants and really taking a look at the costs. You know, we're, we're being told that there is a trade-off. And really, you know, weigh what that looks like. And as Director Liscalia was talking about, it's some, you know, she's got to make the, the case to city council. And I, I can't believe they're doing what they are with three hundred thousand bucks, you know. And so, you know, are, are we talking, you know, a ten percent increase in, in cost of the overall budget and, and increased safety for, you know, all of the citizens, all of the residents who use those fields? I, you know, that, I think that might be something we, we want to consider. But anyway, I just kind of rambled a bit, but anyway, this is all really interesting.
It is really interesting.
It's pretty encouraging. Yeah, I find it all.
Yeah.
Everyone would talk to us, that'd talk to us. And they're really encouraging. Maybe those seminars that they go to, it's worth it. Right?
Yeah, a question for you, Adele. You were, you were getting at when people are applying the bee spray insecticide, that you're trying to find if there's added things that people do after that other than just leaving it there and-
We didn't get a clear answer on that.
Right, right. And I wonder what the practice is in terms of those trainings are? You know, that, do you clean, wash, wipe it down afterwards or something like that?
Now, did they say they have contractors do that or they do it?
They, it sounded to me like if they find a nest, they just spray it.
Right, then they get the call.
And, you know, this is just a case of one anecdote, but I talked to a janitor person at one school who said, oh, we just go to the hardware store and buy a can of, whatever, you know, poison or, I don't know, whatever, and spray it, so.
Stinx.
Yeah, well, that's what they have stored in the DPHW building or whatever the building was, not the, whatever it was. But we don't know what might, might be brought in the hardware store. But the question is, is that area roped off so that kids don't start playing in it with, you know, there's, I imagine that contamination lasts for a while. So that would be something that I would hope there would be guidelines about. If you spray for, for a nest, if it's on the ground, that you put caution tape around that area for X amount of days. I don't know what the number of days is, but I imagine there's a recommendation somewhere.
I feel like looking up all of these pesticides because I'm betting a lot of them are very short lifetimes.
That would be really cool if you could do that. You're, you're the, you're the chemist, Donna.
Right, right, Stinx, I would bet things are really short in lifetime. But I look up all the ones that you've developed up here. Berkey, Escalade.
Yeah, I agree. I love that Chem Long, Chem Long turned, changed its name to True Green.
Yeah.
Who wants a chemical lawn?
I'm sorry, were you going to say something? I'm just, I think, you know, bringing up Child's Park. Child, Child and Look Park may be something that we need to look at. They are both privately owned.
Oh, I didn't realize Look Park was Child's Park.
Oh, yeah. And Child's Park, right now, is being run by your fellow councilperson, Nathan Murphy. So he's overseeing that through the trust of Child's people, family, faith. So he's the one that-
They have a board, right? And is he the president of the board?
I think he is. So, and then Look Park just has a brand-new person now superintendent. So I don't know, you know, when we do smoking stuff at the Board of Health, we bring in Look Park. And Look Park voluntarily owns it all, so that was going to be a most likely part. So it might be something for us to consider. It's where a lot of people go, but it's not city-owned, so I don't know where we draw the line. Right, I don't think you can do very much about whatever they use. I, I know, but it would be interesting in knowing what that is.
I don't know. Well, that's an interesting question. I think our mission doesn't specifically restrict us to city-owned property. So we could invite them to come in and talk to us. They don't, they don't have to agree, they don't want to. And I would think that it would be possible that one of our recommendations to city council would be to do a massive public education campaign for ordinary old residents of our city about the dangers of pesticides and what, what you can do instead.
You know, it's so difficult because a lot of these pesticides round up, being notably one of them, their toxicity data is not very scary.
That's what I was wondering, is it, yeah.
Like, I think that they've been mentioning-
A lot of it is conducted by the company itself, a lot of these studies. And they're safe, of course. And then, of course, there's the problem of you have to test the active ingredient, but you don't have to test the other substances-
The carriers, right.
The, whatever you call it, the surfactants and the other things that make, that increase potency of the actual chemical you've tested. But you don't have to test the combination. And that's a big problem. That's a problem on the federal level. Although I suppose our state could change our own rules, but that's, that's a whole different scale than what we're doing here, which is, we're starting out with Northampton.
But if, if we know the active ingredient, glyphosate, that should have a, have an MSDS sheet, right, doesn't that tell us?
What are you talking, which one are you talking about? She's talking about glyphosate.
Oh, glyphosate.
So round up, forget the manufacturers.
No, the MSDS sheet will not tell you that.
It will not tell you?
No. No, and it may not even, I don't even know if the MSDS sheets for Roundup include the surfactant. That's considered the inner ingredient. But it's far from the inner.
So there's, there are, there's a school of thought out there that the surfactants make it much more dan, make, make the chemical, the active ingredient, much more dangerous, which of course is why they add them, is because it's more effective.
Exactly.
More effective at killing things.
I think I mentioned to you that there is a big crowdfunded effort going on in Italy where they're looking very closely at Roundup. And they've already done some studies on early toxicities. And it's very distressing results are coming out from studies. And these are clearly not company-mandated studies.
Right. Yeah, if you, if you restricted your view to only research that was done outside of the company making the money off of it, you would get a different picture.
But who's going to do that research?
Certainly, certainly we wouldn't expect federal funds for it nowadays.
But anyway, all we can do is what we can do, right?
Right. Okay, so we have ten more minutes. We can go ahead and approve our minutes from our last meeting. So why don't we just go ahead and do that? And then, then we can move on just to one, one other issue. Did anyone have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that. Discussion.
Nice work.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we've approved the minutes. Now, I, I circulated to everyone and got no comments back, some draft letters to the people we wanted to invite to the forums. Some draft letters to the people we wanted to invite to the forums. And. I was always afraid to comment. It's a little bit easy. You can, you can reply back to me. And then especially for the letter that you and I are going to co-sign, I definitely want your comments on that one. So I'm assuming that since no, no one had comments, that we're good to go with that text. Does anybody have access to the addresses for the people who we had have named? So that we could actually send them these invitations?
I think she says I'm opening them up now. So the people we're targeting are?
Well, we have quite a list. We have Bernadette, your neighbor.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
If you could send me her address, that would be good. We have Rich Jasky, we have, oh, Laura Sanders, somebody named Maggie Leonard. Alisa may have all of this information. So I, I mean, I, I know how to reach some of these people, but not all of them. Len Cohen, I don't know, but Alisa may know.
We have record of all of these. So far, these are all applicants for the committee. And so we'll have record of them over at the council office.
Okay. So that would mean that Laura Kretzler would have access to it for any that we're in need of. Okay, well, I will work on sending out these letters. But you all have a couple more days to look at the text and let me know individually. Let me know, sorry about that. That's okay. If you want, if you, we have improvements to recommend. And then I will get the letters out. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna give feedback to Alisa about the poster. And then we're gonna get addresses for the letters. Are there any other to-dos from today's meeting that I'm forgetting?
Well, I had a, so were we going to hear from the ad commission?
That's Rich Jasky.
So if Rich will be able to speak to that. Okay, that makes sense.
Just a procedural question.
Go ahead.
I don't have a capability to scan. So these are all the things that people gave us today. I don't know what we'd like to do about that. I can give the minutes to Laura and hand her these, or?
I can scan.
You can?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Then I could email them.
That's perfect. And I think we were waiting for someone else was going to send us something?
Yes.
I was saying Tony was going to send us.
Tony was, thank you so much, Kate.
Tony, and I think Dave Pomerantz was going to send us something too.
And hopefully if we.
And he wrote down our email address, Dave Pomerantz.
Right.
So when we get those, well, hopefully, if he's sending them by email, they'll already have been scanned.
Right.
So that's great, thank you so much. So are there any new business that we want to?
Excuse me, can I go back? Do I, I'm not sure I have your email address, Cynthia.
That's okay, I can send it to you. Let me see if I have yours, Kate. Kate Simmons at Crocker.
Kate Simmons at Crocker, yeah.
Yeah.
Dot com.
Send it to you again. Perfect.
All right, so. I'm just looking at my, I'm trying to get to my calendar to see how, that our next meeting is. Wants me to, I'm trying to log into the city.
Yeah, it's a.
It's a pain in the butt.
Sometimes it magically appears and sometimes it's not.
It doesn't.
So I have it set for October 7.
At 10.
Okay. Okay. So let's, let's, send, send your ideas to me for an agenda for that meeting. It seems to me we need to digest what we learned today and come up with some ideas for how to move forward. So we could have that as our, as an agenda item. Or we could have certain people in pairs do some of this work outside of the meeting. But I'm open for suggestions.
One more we're planning to invite the people. We can get some of the interested parties in this meeting.
Well, the two forums that we were going to be inviting all those people to.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what the deal is?
Yes, yes, the deal.
Yeah, you're right.
And those are a little further into October. It's the 16th and the 21st, October 16th and 21st. So now, but if we haven't set those in stone, we could consider changing them and making it sooner.
Can I just say again how this got changed, just so I have this right? October 16th is not going to be, or is going to be evening.
7:00 PM.
There is, yes, there is an evening.
And then the 21st. And then the 23rd will be a day.
No.
No.
So then the 21st, which was going to be our normal 10:00 AM meeting, will now be a 10:00 AM forum. And then the 23rd, which was going to be a forum, will now be our meeting. Okay? Is everybody, is everybody saying that? That's mine, huh? Okay?
So I, sometimes I need to repeat it.
That's okay.
Okay, so the 16th is a forum. The 21st, which typically is a meeting, will be a forum.
Yes.
At 10.
And then we're going to do that Wednesday night that was originally a forum and have that as a meeting.
Correct.
That's the 23rd. Okay, cool.
And the 21st is at 10, yeah?
Yes. So we have a. The same times that we had on our calendars reserved, but we just swapped what they were.
Yeah, I thought it was a great strategy.
Okay. So we've got those invitations out maybe by the end of this week for people to come to the forums. And they will, hopefully, they'll be starting to send us things through our Gmail account that we can then start reading.
That's once they come to the forum, then they do that?
Well, we're inviting them to send in information at any time.
Oh, okay.
No matter. Okay. So we're hoping they'll send it in sooner because if we get a whole lot of information late in October, it's going to be hard to read it all before our report is due in November. Okay, so for our next agenda, we'll talk about the structure of our report and who's going to work on which sections. And we'll work on digesting the information that we have learned today. Does that sound good?
Also, Alisa had mentioned the idea of a letter to the editor.
Yeah, one of the drafts you got.
Oh, that's it?
That's okay. There's a letter to invitees and then there's also a letter to the editor.
Thank you, okay. Well, and also that Alisa and I intend to provide, to report out to council at our next council meeting.
Oh.
We, the chairs of committees are allowed to report out towards the start of the meeting.
Oh.
And so we'll give a little overview of what we've been up to and also advise people of the upcoming forums.
Oh, excellent, okay, great. All right. Anything else to talk about today? Shall we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good job.